Planning Commission. I'm Devancha Patel, Chair of the Commission. Tonight, the Commission will resume our previous discussion on the Missing Middle
You might have to turn off the TV when that door is active.
I would like to share a few logistical points for those members or commissioners participating remotely. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. We will have no public speakers tonight. All speakers will be virtual. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers at this time. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk? Do we have any virtual speakers?
We have 33 virtual speakers.
Okay, wonderful. May we begin with the first? I think we've already read it, so we're just doing our carryover at this point.
Okay.
Is that? I don't think. I think that that's right. We can just continue to move forward.
Okay. By show of nods, virtually, can everyone hear me on Teams? Thank you. Our first two speakers, I will call one name and one after the other so that you can prepare yourself to speak. Our first speaker is Barbara Taylor, followed by Danielle Aragoni.
And we ask that if you're not speaking, please turn off your camera and mute your
Are you ready for me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Okay. I was prepared to speak yet again tonight about lot size, parking, annual caps, geographic dispersion, and so on, but we're way beyond that now. Those of us opposed to the Missing Middle proposal are fighting the gauzy, unrealistic dream of achievable homeownership for everyone who wants to live in Arlington. We've been pointing out the inconvenient facts about Missing Middle to an audience that would rather believe in the housing equivalent of Santa Claus. No wonder they don't want to listen. Young and moderate income people want to own a piece of Arlington and raise a family here, and I don't blame them. But the sad fact is that most of them won't be able to afford whatever ownership opportunities Missing Middle creates, and if they could, they could probably afford what's on the market today in Arlington in the form of older houses, townhouses, and the like. I'm assuming that the YIMBs aren't dreaming of the small rental apartments that Missing Middle will actually provide, especially in the largest multiplexes they all seem to favor without limits everywhere in the county. The county has raised the expectations of the pro-Missing Middle side to the extent that no one will be happy when the dust settles. Those of us who own single-family houses on small lots, especially near metro, fear that a behemoth with six small rental apartments and inadequate parking will be built next door. Those current renters looking to own a family-sized condo duplex or townhouse will find it just as or even more expensive than the older, single-family houses, condos, and townhouses on the market today, so they'll be upset, too. The county has opened Pandora's Box, and who knows what will jump out of it, who and what will be harmed, and whose hopes will be crushed. The Missing Middle utopia its supporters envision sounds too good to be true because it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danielle Aragoni, followed by Brian Casabianca, and then John Rigby.
Hi, and thank you for having me tonight. Thank you to the Commissioners for all your hard work and to all the public speakers tonight who are spending their time to chime in and help shape Arlington's future. My name is Danielle Aragoni. I'm a resident of Arlington County. I'm currently managing Director of Policy at National Housing Trust, and I've been listening to some of the testimony, and I can say with confidence that there's a lot of good work that has been done. A lot of planning has been done to get us where we are. Those who remain opposed don't recognize, it seems, many of the concessions that have been made over the last three years in studies through the course of Open Door Mondays and Civic Association meetings and forums like this, where the county has heard, county and the Commission have heard feedback, and incorporated that into the plan. I've been a little frustrated by some of the mistruths that have been promoted throughout this process, one of which says that seniors will be displaced. I previously served as ARP's Director of Livable Communities, where we promulgated Missing Middle and other housing solutions like this, exactly so that seniors could age in place in the communities that they love and have housing alternatives available to them that currently simply don't exist, when only single-family homes are available in many neighborhoods throughout DC, throughout Arlington. My apologies. I've been frustrated by the mysteries about the environmental harm that would be caused by this plan. That's also not true. In a former role, I worked at EPA in our land use and smart earth office, where we demonstrated that higher density development is actually the very best way to protect open space, watersheds, energy efficiency, and address climate resilience. We promote a research that clearly demonstrates the water and energy benefits of housing exactly like this. And finally, I've been frustrated by the mysteries that this isn't a housing solution. It is. It's not complete. It's not perfect, but it is an essential precursor to creating the needed supply that will then be followed on by subsidies, incentives, and other programs that will make housing even more affordable. It absolutely begins with zoning change to bring the supply online so that we can welcome member store community. I've been heartened by-
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Brian Casabianca, followed by John Rigby.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Speak to you on behalf of a group of PhD-level economists and Arlington citizens. We have decades of experience in the public and private sector. We've sent the Arlington County Board a detailed letter explaining that there has been no serious economic analysis done related to the Missing Middle, no cost-benefit analysis, no stakeholder engagement plan that is reasonable. The few premises put forward do not stand up to any kind of scrutiny. There's no shortage of demand in living Arlington. Why would Missing Middle make it more affordable? It would open up more units to the wealthy at the front of the line to get in. If so, the plan should be called an increased-density plan, not a plan to improve affordability, equity, or inclusion. Rezoning homes makes them eligible for the highest use. Developers will look to maximize their profits. The result are the prices of existing homes will be more out of reach for those who could have previously afforded them. The change in housing prices will be close to zero for any Missing Middle build-out rate. Why? There's just too many apartments in Arlington. Look around you. There's apartments everywhere for a few extra housing units to make any difference whatsoever. In addition, the real cost of construction makes them prohibitive from a cost perspective. Developers are building for the high-scale, high-income earners that are currently drawn to Arlington because of the abundance of well-paying jobs. The end result is that the Missing Middle will benefit a very narrow segment of the population while displacing those who need housing the most towards middle income and in particular, low-income families. So given the inadequacy and lack of compelling economic arguments in favor of the Missing Middle, we believe this proposal is unjustifiable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is John Rigby, followed by Lamute Lipinski.
Thank you. I oppose Missing Middle. It is not supported by any real analysis. This is something that I would expect from our Republican friends, since it borrows from Republican ideology. It is based on the belief that if we let the developers subdivide the county whichever way they want, ignoring environmental and other negative consequences, this will somehow magically solve some housing problem. I expect that it will badly exacerbate stormwater problems and overwhelm the infrastructure in the county. No one has done any real analysis of this. It will also likely dramatically increase gentrification. New York City was ahead of the curve in promoting greater density. Now, we can see videos on YouTube of new six-unit rental apartment buildings with massive roof decks and balconies on what were previously streets of only detached homes or townhouses in Bedford-Stuyvesant, which is now being called Stuyvesant Heights by the developers. I can see the same thing in Arlington's future in Halls Hill and in single-family neighborhoods in South Arlington, where there are now relatively affordable, single-family homes. As a byproduct of the increased density, Bed-Stuy has seen a dramatic decrease in its African-American population and now has almost as many whites as African-Americans. The drop in African-American population is also happening in New York City as a whole, and it is so extreme that officials are concerned about a nursing shortage. There's a large percentage of nurses in New York City have been African-American. There's also a YouTube video of a new construction condo in a four-unit building in Harlem with balconies looking down on townhouses on the block. It is now on the market for over 2.8 million. That is not my definition of affordable. Is this the future we really want for Arlington? It will benefit only the developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lamute Lipinski, followed by Audrey Clement.
I oppose the middle, the Missing Middle. I'm an immigrant from the former Soviet Union, and I grew up in an apartment building. Our parking lot was always full, and my dad had to park the car far away. Our school was overcrowded. There were about 40 students crammed into a small classroom. We weren't learning much. During breaks, my teacher would lock herself and cry. One of my happiest days since coming to America was when I was able to outbid a developer and purchase a single-family house on a pretty large lot in Arlington. If Missing Middle is adopted, a developer would be able to bid much more for a property, since the developer would be able to construct multiple houses on the property. This would prevent the people like me from being able to purchase a single-family house with a yard for the kids. There is also a bad stormwater issue in the neighborhood, and allowing more houses on lots would make it much worse. Missing Middle would also create parking problems, especially if developers are not required to construct parking on-site. It would also change the character of a quiet neighborhood. I'm also worried that the increased density will cause school overcrowding, excessive traffic, and the lack of parking spaces. The housing is expensive in Arlington, and most low- or middle-income families will not be able to afford multifamily homes anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next is Audrey Clement, followed by John Obenberger.
I'm Audrey Clement, a 19-year Westover tenant. Martin Luther King is most famous for a speech in which he said, "I still have a dream." It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. The American dream to which King referred is often understood to mean homeownership. Missing Middle is also about dreams, but not of the homeownership variety, because most of the units will be rental. For developers who will reap double or triple on the lots they flip, Missing Middle is a dream come true. For people of color, Missing Middle is a pipe dream, because according to the county's own data, most of them can't afford to buy or rent Missing Middle units. For whites who can afford Missing Middle units, today's ignored impacts, such as congestion, lack of parking, overcrowded schools, increased runoff, and decreased tree canopy, will become tomorrow's neighborhood nightmare. As for the nonprofits pushing Missing Middle, including Voice, Sierra Club, the Faith Community, and until recently, the NAACP, their leadership is living in a dream world. Either they are willfully ignorant of the county's own data showing that Missing Middle will be out of reach of most of their constituents, or they are deliberately misleading them. When Missing Middle gears up, whole neighborhoods will be flipped or emptied of low-income residents, most of them seniors or people of color, who can't afford the increased property taxes that Missing Middle will bring. If Arlington's so-called progressive community were interested in anything but self-righteous virtue signaling, it would propose housing solutions that work, not one that even YIMBs characterize as supply-side trickle-down housing. Like voodoo economics, Missing Middle is a bad dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Obenberger, followed by Andrew Elbe.
I object to Missing Middle housing anywhere. I specifically object to Proposal 5A and any other proposal that reduces traffic, parking on parcels below one per unit that would be built, and the proposed parking should not be tied to any on-street parking already in the neighborhood. I object to any parking allowed in front of a dwelling, specifically B1 and B2. On page 40, the proposal would allow two or three cars to be parked between the front property line and the front of the house. That goes against the context of just about every neighborhood in Arlington County and doesn't fit the context. There's been no analysis conducted now for the proposed Missing Middle housing, and we've got 65,000 people planned to come to Arlington in the next 20 years with buyright housing that's expected to be developed already, and Arlington County has no plan to accommodate that growth, no plan for infrastructure, no plan for schools, no plan for stormwater, no plan for sanitary sewer, no plan to accommodate a 25% increase in population without Missing Middle housing. Recommend that you eliminate any restriction on parking to 0.5 as proposed, because right now, we only have 23,000 people a day using buses in Arlington County. That's down 50% from over 12 years ago, and there's been a constant decline in transit use from 2014, when it was at 46,000. It went down to 39,000 per day in 2019. So all the work and all the pounding of everybody's chest in Arlington County about transit-oriented development and how we need to plan around transit hasn't been proved by people wanting to use cars and need cars.
Next, we have Andrew Elbe, followed by Pamela Quanred and Kathleen O'Toole.
Hi, I'm Andrew Elbe, and I live in Lion Park, where there's mostly single-family-zoned housing, and I've never really participated in Arlington politics, except for voting. I've never been to a commission meeting or a county board meeting. Apparently, I've never written prepared comments to use in a setting like this, but I favor the most permissive form of Missing Middle, realizing it's not going to bring about a utopia. It'll just make some difference around the edges, and that's... I don't have any other points to add to the debate, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Quanred, followed by Catherine O'Toole and Michael Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Pam Quanred, and I'm here today representing the Alliance for Housing Solutions. We ask that you approve the RTA without delay and with as few restrictions as possible. Our current housing stock and zoning practices reserve the vast majority of the county for the affluent and fail to meet the broader needs of our growing community. The status quo is the very definition of inefficient land use. Expanded housing options reduce costs and help us avoid the loss of senior, middle, and working-class residents who are vital to our racial, cultural, and economic diversity. Let me make a few specific points on issues of greatest concern to us, and I'll refer you to our letter to the Planning Commission for a more detailed summary of our positions. Regarding 1A, Missing Middle housing should include up to six units across all of Arlington. More units simply means more of the most affordable units. Regarding 2A and 10B, Missing Middle housing, and specifically six units, should be allowed on any feasible lot. This directly addresses the racist exclusionary zoning practices of our past. Regarding 5C and E, Arlington has a housing crisis and not a parking crisis. Let's incentivize housing people and keeping land green. Regarding 7B, new housing options should not be capped. We need as much financially attainable housing as we can get. Our current zoning is the largest single barrier to the county's vision of a diverse and inclusive, world-class urban community. It's time to take down this barrier. We urge that you approve the most expansive version of the RTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen O'Toole, followed by Michael Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen O'Toole, and I have been a single-family homeowner in Arlington for 12 years. I'm a school counselor in Fairfax County, and my husband has been a teacher with Arlington Public Schools since 1995. When I became pregnant with our first child in 1999, we were renting in the Courthouse neighborhood, but we could not afford to buy a home here, so we moved out to Loudoun County, where we lived for 10 years. My husband commuted almost two hours to work every day, to and from work. The only thing that kept him teaching in Arlington and not transferring to teach in Loudoun was that, at the time, teachers in Arlington were paid significantly more than teachers in Loudoun County. This made the commute worth it. Today, teachers in Arlington often make less money than teachers in Fairfax and Loudoun. It's easy to look up the salary scales online and see that it would not be worth it for a young teacher to commute to Arlington from Fairfax or Loudoun today. If we want Arlington to have top-notch schools, which we cannot have without good teachers, we must act now to create housing opportunities for them here in our county. This will attract and keep our excellent young teachers here. Otherwise, their easy decision will be to leave. Yes, we need to pay teachers more, but we also need to create more housing opportunities for teachers and other young people who are the future of Arlington. We cannot afford to wait. We must act now. I urge you to move forward with the Missing Middle housing proposal and to strongly recommend the most robust and expansive version of the plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Michael Hamilton, followed by Susan Land.
Hello. I'm a homeowner here in Arlington. I live in a condominium with my wife and our two kids. It's a great place, and I wish more people had the same opportunity we did to live in a great place like Arlington. Regarding the Missing Middle proposal, it's already a pretty restrictive proposal, just because it doesn't give any extra size to buildings, any floor area ratio, or massing or height. So that alone, it's going to be not delivering a ton of units, and so I encourage the Planning Commission to recommend the most flexible, least restrictive options possible so that we can actually have a few of these Missing Middle units built. So more multifamily is great. Build them near me. Build them right in my backyard. Build them next door. I'd love to see more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Susan Land, followed by Wells Harrell.
Hi, my name is Susan Land, and I'm representing ATAG, the Arlington Tree Action Group. As many of you know, the current tree canopy requirements for new buyright development in Arlington are 20% canopy in 20 years. For EHO properties, the county board and staff are proposing a new requirement for trees, four shade trees for each project with two to four units, and eight shade trees for each project with five to six units. While this requirement is an improvement of the previous one-tree-per-unit policy, it still falls short from guaranteeing EHO properties will result in a 20% tree canopy across the county. For instance, if a developer chooses to use all medium-sized trees, this chart shows the instances in red where the resulting canopy will be less than 20%, almost half the instances. If, however, the developer chooses to use large-sized trees, the situation is better, but there are still several instances where the result is less than 20% canopy, particularly in R10 and R20. ATAG is recommending that the EHO proposal base tree requirements on R-zone rather than number of units. We can guarantee a 20% tree canopy on all lots if we require four large shade trees in zones R5 through 8, eight large shade trees in R10, and 12 large shade trees in R20. Attached to this presentation, that you all have a copy of, is a word-in, word-out markup of the current 10.4.6 landscaping requirement that you can use to make this change happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Wells Harrell, followed by Andrew Tuneski.
Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, a few weeks ago, I was talking with my daughter about the proposal to allow more kinds of homes in our neighborhood, and here's what she told me, this is a quote. "I want people to have a happy life in Arlington, but they can't have that if there aren't enough houses." I mean, I couldn't have said it better myself. Being a parent has taught me that kids have this funny way of getting straight to the heart of something. You know, issues that can seem fraught and complicated to us grownups can seem so easy and simple to them. And so, as you consider the proposal to expand housing options in Arlington, I hope you remember the equity statement that the Commission passed a few years ago. You recognize that zoning laws have concentrated people of color within certain parts of the community, and you committed to making Arlington's land use laws and policies more equitable for all Arlingtonians. There's so much complexity in the various options that you're accustomed to managing, things like aesthetics and parking and lot-size minimums, but amidst all of that, there is a simple truth: more flexibility means more homes. And as the Vice Chair of the Housing Committee of our local NAACP, that's why our branch supports the most flexible options and urges the Planning Commission to recommend approval of those options, contrary to what you heard from one of the speakers tonight. More flexibility means more homes, and more homes are what we need truly to make Arlington for not just my daughter, but for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Tuneski, followed by Michaela Pond and Nancy Tate.
I'm Alexander Tuneski, representing the Ashton Heights Civic Association. We surveyed our residents and found that 78% oppose the expanded housing proposal. While most support the original policy goals of increasing affordable housing options, 80% believe that the policy will not do so. We believe that this proposal will generate corporate-owned, luxury rental apartments that are already widely available in the county, rather than the affordable family housing and homeownership opportunities that we would welcome. Accordingly, we urge the county to proceed cautiously, taking moderate steps now and studying the impact of these developments before going all in on an irreversible policy decision that will directly impact hundreds of immediate neighbors. That being said, if this proposal must move forward, we support the following options. Option 2B, increasing the number of permitted dwellings by lot size across the entire county, because the burden of expanded housing should be shared equally across the county, and density should be determined by lot size. Option 7A, institution of a cap, but the cap should be no more than 21 units per year and should include limits to ensure that expanded housing developments are spread throughout the county. Option 5A, a minimum of 0.5 parking spaces with a parking survey, because we know, in reality, our residents, despite living right next to the metro, still rely on cars for daily needs. It's already hard to drive down some of our streets, so a parking survey is absolutely necessary to ensure that we can accommodate all of the vehicular traffic, including guests and delivery men, that 12 or more new residents may create. Option 4A, no change to lot coverage requirements. Option 11A, tiered caps on- Option 11A, tiered caps on gross-floor area. And Option 12A, no accessory dwellings, because we want to preserve tree canopy, maintain the same building scale as single-family homes, and ensure that density is aligned with lot size. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michaela Pond, followed by Nancy Tate and Hendrick Obelston.
Good evening. My story starts in the middle. We came to Arlington in 1998 on orders from the Marine Corps and artillery lieutenant and a Mexican-American teacher expecting our first baby. We felt fortunate to find a brick colonial we could affordably rent from a State Department family on South Wayne Street. The next year, we anxiously entered Arlington's real estate market and were blessed to find a seller that favored a neighborhood teacher's bid over a higher one. We settled on South Pershing Street, now with baby number two. That first home purchase was our middle-class entree to Arlington. We also benefited from an APS perk for first-time homebuyers, a $5,000 one-time bonus which helped us with closing costs. We have thrived here since. I am now in my 28th year of teaching in Arlington Public Schools. My marine is now a patent attorney, and those two babies graduated their way through Arlington's fine schools and onto college. That hot real estate market has continued into our benefit now that we are homeowners. We moved in the early 2000s to a fixer-upper, across the street from our elementary school in Lion Village. Each Halloween brings hundreds of current and former students to our front porch. Tough times for other students bring them to my front porch for solace, safety, and advice from a trusted teacher. However, 70% of my colleagues at Key have to live outside of Arlington as middle housing opportunities lessen. Instead of engaging with neighborhood students, these teachers commute out Route 66. They are now moving to neighboring school districts because the cost of housing and the commute is too much. Communities thrive when their teachers, police, nurses, and promising young people can be neighbors. Our families have the good fortune to call ourselves Arlingtonians for nearly 25 years now. We want that good fortune for others coming to our town's middle like we did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Tate, followed by Hendrick Obelston.
Hello.
Hold on, Nancy. Sorry, we were having some feedback. Could you unmute your microphone?
I thought I had. Okay.
We think there might be something interfering with your microphone. Do you have a phone or something else going that might be interfering? You can try again to unmute.
I'm hitting. I'm unmuteing. I'm sorry, I don't know what's wrong.
We'll move you down in the list, and maybe you could try to call in. We'll move you down a few people, and we'll try and get you to be able to call in. So we'll go to our next speaker, Hendrick Obelston.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and express my support for the proposal. To me, it's a very honest and simple question of what this community will look like in another 30 years. The homes that a generation ago were able to be lived in and purchased by people of more modest means, they're all disappearing. And in their place, large homes that will mean in another generation perhaps that the vast majority of our land will be occupied by the exclusively wealthy. Let's not let that happen. Let's allow for more opportunity. So I urge you to adopt the proposal in its most liberal form so that there is indeed more opportunity for more people of more kinds, of the greater diversity, economically and otherwise, to continue to have the opportunity to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fazia Dean.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. My name is Fazia Dean. I'm an attorney and a deputy outreach director at Dara Hidra Islamic Center. Dara Hidra is a member of Voice, and although our organization is on Route 7, we have almost 3,000 members of our congregation that live in Arlington. I'm here tonight to ask you to allow more houses to be built across Arlington and not to draw red lines again. No more redlining. Many of our families and households are impacted by the shortage of homes. And most of the families, as you already know, are spending almost their whole paychecks for rent, forcing them to use our food banks more and more. Other families are trying to buy their first homes, and they wish to stay in Arlington near their jobs and other family members, good schools, and places of worship, but there are not enough houses available. So the missing middle, as you know, couldn't be here tonight because they're working second jobs. And I really would like to urge you, my dear colleagues, to do the right thing, the just thing, is to approve the most expansive version of the missing middle plan, and that includes sixplexes everywhere, because we need more houses everywhere. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Sinai Pacheco, followed by Carla Gorrell. And Nancy Tate, we're going to add you to the end of the list, just so you're aware.
Hello. My name is Sinai Pacheco, and I support the middle, missing housing. I've lived in Arlington for the past year and a half. I love living here because of the walkability, energy, and diversity. I come from an immigrant family. When we first moved to the United States, affordable housing was our only option. Having that opportunity to have low-income housing gave my family the opportunity to prioritize necessities like food, clothes, enrichment, after-school activities for us growing up. I can't imagine what necessities we would have to cut out and how that would have affected my upbringing. Due to the temporary assistance, my family was able to get on their feet and start a company, and I was able to go to college, move here, and no longer have the need to utilize affordable housing, thankfully. I would love for other people to have the same opportunities I did. This is why we ask that you take pass on the most expansive of the middle, missing housing, on the missing middle option. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carla Gorrell, followed by Kathy Rehill.
My name is Carla Gorrell. I'm a retired Presbyterian minister and a resident of Arlington since 1952. Since the early 1960s, Arlington has been on a long journey from a racially segregated community to a more inclusive one. For decades, I have seen our population become more diverse as Asian, Latino, and Middle Eastern immigrants move here, start businesses, and raise their families. Yet rent and home values have increased to the point where sadly, we are losing the diversity that makes Arlington such a vibrant place to live. I was pleased to read the Planning Commission's 2020 statement acknowledging that restrictive zoning policies passed in 1961 and still in effect today leave people of color with no hope of owning a home in Arlington. And the Commission has shown leadership in your commitment to changing laws that limit home access for middle-income workers like teachers, nurses, firefighters, young families, and single adults. Well, now is the time for Arlington to do the right thing and make expanded zoning equitable for all Arlingtonians. We need to provide opportunities for households to buy or rent in every neighborhood in Arlington. To make this proposal successful, I urge you to recommend the most flexible option, which is 2A. If your recommendation includes further restrictions on the number of units allowed, parking mandates, or proximity to transit, then the results will not be consistent with the Planning Commission's own stated vision and goals. Communities across the country are watching us. Arlington can be a proud model for change, putting into practice what we say we value about being a welcoming, thriving, and inclusive community. Saying yes to diverse and equitable housing will preserve what is best about Arlington.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Kathy Rehill, followed by Alice Hogan, and then Rebecca Lawrence.
Hi, this is Kathy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Kathy Rehill. I'm a resident of Arlington, been here since 1995. I'm also a Realtor, and I'm a member of Arlingtonians for our Sustainable Future. I've listened to a lot of speakers who have been led to believe that the most expansive version of this missing middle proposal will create a path to affordability and equity. I truly appreciate their passion and their vision, but as a Realtor who spends every day considering the price of properties in Virginia and in Arlington in particular, I can tell you that these supporters have misplaced their hopes for affordability and diversity in a well-intentioned but absolutely ineffective policy proposal. Your vote to approve this proposal will be symbolic, but it will not create the three-bedroom housing that Arlington needs, and it will not advance diversity. It will accelerate gentrification. Let me tell you why. By-right development and the private sector always have profit as their motive, not affordability. This policy of by-right development, relying on that to create affordability, is a false premise. You need to hit the pause button and get this right. In terms of the four-to-sixplexes, of course, they're more affordable because they're the smallest. If you're going to squeeze six units into a building the size of a single-family home, those are going to be one-bedroom units. I think you'd be surprised to hear that last year, according to the MLS, 55% of the sales in Arlington were one- and two-bedroom units. We do not need more rental condos. We do not need more small units. What we need are three-bedroom units. And so we encourage you to consider duplexes and tries at the most, because that will create the housing that all these people who have been renting here love Arlington and want to stay need.
Next, we have Alice Hogan, followed by Rebecca Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Alice Hogan. I'm a lifetime Arlingtonian, and I've been watching and studying this missing middle proposal really since it came into the 2015 master plan, when Alliance for Housing Solutions had a panel in 2016, and since the study was launched in 2019, 2020. This proposal really looks at three things: supply, housing type, and inclusion. And so with that lens, we can see that many of the needs that we have in Arlington will be well-met by this proposal. Good planning in Arlington that I have watched over these many decades addresses our community needs and is responsive to changes that are happening, just as we did with the metro corridor. It's time for this generation to do something new. While that planning did its job, it also had other impacts, which was to keep those neighborhoods, 80% of our county, the same as it's always been. We can't continue to live that way if we want to live our values. It's time to make some changes and to welcome some gentle density across our county. Planning can also undo our old zoning, right? So while old planning was exclusionary, we can use the same tool to be inclusive, and that's what we have an opportunity to do in our county and you as commissioners to vote on. So we use this lens: supply, type, and inclusion, with your own racial equity resolution and that of the counties. And so I'll share with you my recommendations, and if time, I'll go back with a few more comments. 1A, we need as many units as we can. You've heard from other speakers that we only need certain types. That's not true. Our population is growing by tens of thousands. We need every kind of unit we can get, and anywhere we can get it. And we cannot house our growing population on the corridors alone. And so getting those sixes everywhere we can is the way to open up the neighborhoods, the very neighborhoods that are exclusionary zoning.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Rebecca Lawrence, followed by Peyton Chung and Dima Hakura. Rebecca Lawrence. We'll come back to Rebecca if she's here. Peyton Chung is next, followed by Dima Hakura.
Good evening. I am Peyton Chung. After planning school at Virginia Tech in Arlington, I now develop missing-middle-scaled housing. I can attest that Raleigh's missing-middle text changes have made it possible for me to offer smaller, lower-priced houses to people priced out of places like Arlington. Arlington's bullseye planning relies on two necessarily high-cost housing types: land-intensive detached houses and capital-intensive high-rises. The result is high housing costs. Missing middle housing requires less land than detached houses and less materials and labor than high-rises, yet it can only reach its full potential for lower costs if it becomes widespread and well-practiced. That means allowing more units in more locations and not rationing it with a county-wide cap. Redevelopment is a slow process. Only 3/10 of 1% of Arlington's detached houses are for sale today. Progress towards the county's equity, affordability, and sustainability goals should not be further limited. The text incentivizes flats, but building codes and lending practices still favor fee simple townhouses. Further steps could adapt building codes to enable flats, review townhouse urban design challenges, require access easements that driveways contribute to the street network, and allow townhouse accessory dwelling units. I commend the county for progress made to date. This zoning change may seem momentous, but even the dry and bitter pill of zoning reform is not magical. Zoning merely shapes changes that are already occurring anyways, and the best we can do with zoning is to shift the unjust, unsustainable status quo. Last, a quick response to complaints about infrastructure sufficiency. Infrastructure is continually repaired and replaced, and expanding infrastructure in existing urbanized areas is much more cost-effective than building it in new rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dima Hakura, followed by Dan Creden.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would love to see the slate wiped clean from Arlington's racist past, but there is no data showing missing middle will correct that. I want to welcome new neighbors, but I do not want to bid goodbye to my elderly neighbor, to people of color, and to middle-class families. I want this commission to plan as it's charged to do. We need measures to prevent gentrification before we proceed. Speakers claim revenue from new neighbors will pay for everything. Will it cover a neighbor's flooded basement from poor stormwater management? No. Will it cover increased taxes and displacement? No. Will it help teachers and firefighters move here? No. Will it prevent sprawl and help the environment? No. People will still move to Loudoun because they get more house for the money, not because there aren't enough two-bedroom apartments in Arlington. Evidence shows that when you budget full costs, each new resident is a net revenue loss. A missing-middle supporter claimed that APS knows how to manage numbers. In recent school board meetings, APS teachers testify larger class sizes have dramatically increased their burden and reduced quality of learning. Our larger classes are failing: Black, Hispanic, and English learners before the pandemic, and they continue to do so. Again, we are faced with a lack of planning. Others request no parking minimums. Elderly residents along the orange line already have difficulty getting in-home assistance and medical care because no parking is available for providers. These problems will become more rampant, not to mention that these zoning changes discriminate against people of disability and are inherently not ADA accessible. Are families with children and car seats also expected to do without a car, or to rush with a projectile-vomiting child to a pediatrician in a cab? Who benefits, predominantly young white professionals such as law firm associates or tech employees who earn well over $150K?
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Dan Creden, followed by Patrick Lozada. If Dan Creden isn't with us, we'll go to Patrick Lozada.
Hi, everyone. My name is Patrick Lozada, and I live in the Douglas Park neighborhood of Arlington. I want to speak up in favor of the expanded housing option proposal, and urge that the county select an option that supports sixplexes, applies current building standards for detached single residential structures, has no parking mandates near transit, imposes no caps on permits, and provides flexibility in terms of lot coverage and design standards. That said, I do want to raise a real concern with that out of the way. I'm concerned that Arlington seems to be falling short in terms of literacy. For example, several speakers on this call have said that the county has done no studies of this issue. I'm concerned that some Arlington residents' struggles with literacy may have left them unable to read the 118-page staff report, the external analysis by the folks at the Partnership for Economic Solutions, the racial at the Partnership for Economic Solutions, the racial and equity studies, the infrastructure plans published by the county, and to effectively engage with multiple rounds of community outreach and engagement since 2019, when this process started. To hear some people on this call start talk, you would think this started yesterday and that nobody thought about it thoroughly. If you read those studies, you will find that the expected yield is redeveloping 19 to 21 properties in the missing middle housing. The new housing will decrease the minimum household income needed to afford a property from $430,000 to $124,000 to $160,000, and the zoning changes would result in housing attainable for 39% of black households, 39% of Latino households, and 60% of Asian households in the Washington metro area. Instead, they would rather yell and scream. In conclusion, I want to thank the county board and the staff for their tireless work on this issue over the last few years since this started in 2019, and again, ask you to pass the most expansive form of expanded housing opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Kathleen Harrison, followed by McCoy Kaufman and Mary Ann Shea. If we don't have Kathleen Harrison, we'll go to McCoy Kaufman.
Hello, everybody. I moved here a year and a half ago to make Arlington my home, and within a year, I was able to find a church I attend regularly where I have friends across generations. I have a job nearby, so don't need to go through an awful commute to get there. And at work, I've made connections with colleagues who are now friends in the area. I also volunteer locally to make Arlington a better place, and I regularly use the library, walk to my grocery store, forget the need of my car until I have to visit my family in the suburbs. I think this place is a wonderful place for people of many different walks of life to connect and share a community. But as I've learned about this gem of a place, I also learned that fewer and fewer people are able to afford to live in this great city. Arlington is home to many renters like me, getting priced out by restrictive and exclusionary zoning laws, laws written decades ago to segregate this community on the basis of race. The impacts of this policy are still seen today and still affect longtime residents, young people who move here like me, young people who have grown up here and would like to stay here. I urge the commission to recommend the most expansive option on the RTA so future residents can look forward to a future here, so that professionals like me who move here can see an sustainable future, so longtime residents see a future for their kids, and so that young people who grew up here and want to contribute to the community can and stay here. Because I want this to be a place for renters, owners, transients, and longtime residents to share, I support 10B, sixplexes, 2A, and no caps. I want to make this a place for my long-term home, but I can't do that if I also get priced out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Ann Shea. And it looks like we don't have Mary Ann on the line, so we'll go to Claudia Delgado.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Delgado. I strongly support the missing middle housing proposal that would bring more housing accessibility to people like me. I'm a teacher at Arlington Public Schools and a parent of a teen and a young adult. My husband and I own a small duplex in the Green Valley neighborhood. About five blocks from there, my two sisters own two more spacious duplexes. They're next-door neighbors. My parents owned one of those homes for 25 years before selling it to one of my sisters. Owning a little piece of Arlington has brought stability, a sense of community, and prosperity to our lives. My parents built generational wealth, and my siblings and I can do the same for our children. Furthermore, living where I work has enhanced my commitment to my profession and has improved my quality of life. I wish my teacher friends, APS staff, my students' families, and young and future professionals could have the same experience. I want them to be able to live in multifamily homes in the 75% of the land reserved for single homes. Now that my son is starting college, I worry that he might not be able to afford to live in Arlington. This is why I especially support the inclusion of sixplexes in the plan, as these will increase accessibility to first-time homeowners. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next is Susan Cunningham, followed by Nancy Tate. Seeing no Susan Cunningham, we'll go to Nancy Tate.
Hello. I'm going to try this again.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. I am Nancy Tate, and I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Arlington and Alexandria City. The League has long supported affordable housing. As part of that effort, we support increasing the housing supply and reducing exclusionary zoning by such means as the missing middle zoning changes. We fully support these and approval of the RTA before the commission. We believe the county needs to reverse historic systemic racism in our residential zoning, and we believe these changes would address both past inequities and the county's future needs. The League supports higher-density zoning in current lower-density areas. We need to spread demand for housing over a far wider swath of Arlington. We need to reduce the relentless upward pressure on Arlington home prices. We need to see single-family zoning for the exclusionary zoning that it is. We need neighborhoods that reflect all Arlingtonians, not just those with means. Taking this step will show Arlington's commitment to the Fair Housing Act, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which established an obligation for localities to affirmatively advance fair housing. The changes under consideration by the county are sensible and measured. This is an opportunity to right the wrongs of the past and to build the Arlington we want for all of our children. The League urges the commission to adopt the most expansive version of the RTA options before it and to do so without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have Rebecca Lawrence, Dan Creedon, Kathleen Harrison, Mary Ann Shea, or Susan Cunningham, so that concludes public comment.
Thank you. So the matter is now with the commission. Thank you, everyone who came on Monday to speak in person and all of our virtual speakers tonight. So, by way of orienting us to how we will proceed tonight, we want to do so as efficiently as possible, ensuring that we are able to get to all questions and comments, but also recognizing that this has come before us previously, and we've gotten some good information in the interim. Just want to make sure that everybody understands that we have gotten reports from our fellow commissioners, to name a few. We've gotten a report from Commissioner Lynn Tellme about transportation. We've gotten some letters from Housing Commission. We've gotten, you know, a number of letters. You guys have all read them. Tonight, what we're going to end up doing is we're going to be following the staff report. I've asked Commissioner Weir to go ahead and tee our motions up tonight, so he will be presenting the first motion on the amendment to the general land use plan. If there is any discussion on that, I expect that there will not be very much discussion. We'll have that, and then we will dispose of that motion. We will then follow with the second motion, which is the crux of the comments. He will read the entire second motion, which is on the staff report, both A and B. We will go through each part, then sequentially, and address any questions or comments. The discussion will then provide amending motions or amendments to the main motion. Following that, we will have some additional motions. I know Commissioner Peterson has... No, no motion? No additional motion? Okay. So, we'll look and see if there's any further motions that need to be addressed as well. So, with that said, Commissioner Weir, can we have the first motion? Hold on one second.
Do you have some clarifying questions?
That's fine. We're going to go through them. Okay, thank you. Oh, no, we're going to have... We're going to address the questions during the discussion. Go ahead. Now you're going to go with your motion. Is it about the procedure?
For anyone following along, there was some discussion about whether or not the questions were procedural or substantive, and so, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the Resolution Attachment 1 attached to the staff report to amend the general land use plan booklet and map, Attachment 2.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Commissioner Weir, seconded by Commissioner Lynn Tellme. Are there any questions, or would any commissioner like to make any question or have any questions, want to address this with staff in any way? This first motion. Commissioner Hughes.
This is just for the GLUP amendment changes.
Just the GLUP amendment.
Just a quick question for staff. So, staff continues to represent that the low-density stays 1 through 10 or 1 through 14. I forget. I don't have the exact number in front of me. In the GLUP map, and I know it's because you believe the averaging over time, is there... How will we address that in the future? What's staff plan for that?
Thank you. So, I'm Kelly Brown, for the record, with the Planning Division. So, I mean, one of the things that's in the staff report is that we will be monitoring the implementation of the EHO development over time, and so that will certainly provide us an opportunity to evaluate the extent to which implementation is happening. But I think it's also important to recognize that this is a long-term vision that we're looking to establish, and something that would not necessarily happen over five years, but 30 years into the future. That's the sort of incremental change we're anticipating here. So, at this moment in time, we don't have any intention of revisiting the 1 to 10 units breaker, but we'll certainly be monitoring the pace of implementation over time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sarley.
Thanks. I'm just going to follow up on that a little bit. I understand the GLUP map to be a planning tool, and so, I would just like to note that we probably ought to try to get ahead of it instead of sort of delay. So, like, if in R5, you know, we're de facto allowing for up to 50 units per acre, that's our policy. That's a plan that we, you know, want to implement. I just think we ought to, you know, move a little bit faster on that, not sort of react to the market. I would just encourage staff to be a little bit more aggressive, and, you know, if you need any support from me and/or the Planning Commission, happy to provide it.
Any other questions on this point? All right, let's move to a vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Abstain.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Abstain.
Schroll?
Aye.
And Patel, aye. The motion carries 8 to 0. Before we move on to the second item, Commissioner Geren, do you want to ask some clarifying questions regarding the comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Steph, I know that you have probably answered these before, but for our record tonight, would you just ensure that we have correct understanding? So, if in fact someone needed a parking space because of some sort of disability, temporary or permanent, they could reserve this in front of their unit, correct?
Yes, they could.
Thank you. And there's no limit to that. You could have one at your house. Someone could have one next door. If there were two people living in side-by-side duplexes, they could reserve two spaces.
Yes, as much as the need is there.
Great, thank you. The next question I have is how you might see this working in practice. So, assuming that a change like this goes through, any individual homeowner could opt to take advantage of this while they were residing on the property, or they could sell, and whoever bought the property could opt to do it. It would be lot by lot as an option going forward. Is that correct?
Are you still referring to the accessible parking spaces, or...?
Nope. I'm referring to embracing this option going forward.
Right.
Trying to gain some clarity around the questions that we heard, and thinking that you might be able to help with that. So, how you see someone envisioning this, how you see this might work out?
Right. So, it would be up to an individual property owner to decide that this was something that they wanted to do with their property, to have something...
At any time in the future.
Right, other than one house per lot.
Next year, five years. And they could do it while they live there, or they could sell it, and someone might do it.
That's correct.
But the option would go, the option would now be there, but it would still be that, just an option, a choice going forward.
That's correct.
Thank you. And then, is there anything to preclude some of our affordable housing developers from also behooving themselves of these changes? Because we had heard that these would not result in affordable units, and I know typically our affordable housing developers have provided larger developments with more units, but there's nothing to stop them from building affordable duplex, sixplex?
That's correct, and I believe you've received comment from affordable housing developers expressing interest in doing exactly that.
Yes, thank you. This is as much to make sure that this is part of our discussion going forward. I do have one more clarifying thing, but it has to do with the trees, so I'll hold off on that. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Weir.
This is a follow-up on Commissioner Geren's question. There would be nothing that would preclude... There's no density floor. Is there anything that would preclude an affordable housing developer from accessing the AHIF for a project like this?
I'm going to ask some of my colleagues in the Housing Division to address that.
Does that work? Does that work? Okay, here we go. There's nothing to preclude them, however, just because of the structure of the notice of funding availability, there's a scoring system, so we'd have to look at how a smaller project would score as compared to a larger one.
But that's... Okay. But being a sixplex itself, that is not a categorical bar to at least beginning to discuss it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Steinber?
Thank you. I had a follow-up question on the disability parking question. Is there a time limit on how long that, those permits are for, or how many times they can be renewed?
I don't know the answer to that. If the, you know, if the space is created, how that's monitored over time, or if, you know, if an individual moves away and it's no longer needed, I don't know how that's worked out.
Okay, so hypothetically, if the need is for a current owner of a property, that property owner sells, there may or may not be a process by which those spots are then monitored to see if particular signage or permits should be removed?
Yeah, I'm not sure, and I might have to follow up on that. And we do have Angie De La Barrera from the Department of Environmental Services on the line. I'm not sure if she would have an answer to that, but I'll give her an opportunity to turn her camera on
Thank you.
if she does.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Angie De La Barrera with DES, Transportation Planning. And my understanding from this is that those signs are placed in front of a household so for the need for the handicap, when it's no longer needed, those signs will be removed. Hopefully, that answers a little bit the question. But you've seen those signs in places where handicap allowed parking here. Those signs would be removed if it's no longer the person living in that house.
I appreciate that. I think what I'm asking is what's the process by confirming or determining when those signs or if those signs are no longer needed because someone... Like, is it cross-checked when a property is sold?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that process.
Okay. If we can get some clarification on that.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we will now move on to the main motion. Commissioner Weir is going to, again, read the entire motion, and we will go through it categorically and sequentially for our discussion, okay? Commissioner Weir?
Just give me one moment. I've got the wrong document up in front of me. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance, Attachment 3, to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance, including Articles 3, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18, to establish regulations for expanded housing option development, EHO development, for properties zoned R20, R10, R8, R6, or R5, see Attachment 4, with an effective date of July 1, 2023, in a manner that incorporates the elements in Sub-Item A and Sub-Item B as listed below. a manner that incorporates the elements in subitem A and subitem B as listed below. Per subitem A, the Commission recommends that the adopted ordinance incorporate the county manager's recommendations for sites located within general land use plan, planning districts, maximum gross floor area, minimum parking requirements, tree requirements, accessory dwellings, conversion of non-conforming dwellings to condominiums or cooperatives, the definition of duplex, and all other elements of the Arlington County zoning ordinance amendments in attachment four, including but not limited to buyright approval for site area up to one acre, special exception approval process for site area of one acre or greater, building height and setbacks, main building footprint, accessory uses, site development standards, sign standards, general parking requirements, Board of Zoning Appeals use permits, and non-conformities. Per subitem B, the Commission recommends that the adopted ordinance further incorporate the following options in the corresponding areas where the county manager has no recommendation: maximum number of units per lot, minimum site plan area, or minimum site area requirements, an annual cap, and lot coverage specifications.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Okay, so we will now begin our discussion. We are going to go with section A. First topic of discussion, sites located within GLUP planning districts, that's option 10. The staff recommendation, Mr. Lad, is 10, is option 10A. Is there any discussion on this point? Commissioner Weir.
Mr. Lad, Ms. Brown, or whomever wishes to ask, to answer it, the question that I have to begin with is, how would 10A impact specifically, and my apologies, I know we've discussed this before, but I just, I'm going to need to hear it again, the planned Langston Boulevard area, should it be adopted under its current map? And I think that the Commission is specifically interested, well, among other things, but I think that a number of members of the Commission are specifically interested in the ability of current single-family homes within the PLB area to avail themselves of EHO options. So I'll just turn the floor over and let you respond. Thank you.
Sure, so in, within the planned Langston Boulevard core study area, there are a number of sites that have R zoning. And so as the vision for planned Langston Boulevard is being refined and a plan is being produced for that area, there will be consideration of how to address those R-zone properties. The thinking is that if there are R-zone properties that are adjacent to parcels, commercial parcels, where assemblage might be needed to realize a plan goal, then those areas would be not eligible for EHO development. And there would be tools brought forward with the implementation of planned Langston Boulevard to make sure that that happens.
Give a follow.
But just to clarify on that, that would not happen with this action, that would happen with future county board action, if that was how the county board acted.
Okay.
Thank you. The second question I have, and I think this is a follow-up, is, Madam Chair, you'll have to come back to me, I've lost my train of thought. I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Lintelme. Commissioner Lintelme.
Yeah, this is a follow-up on that. It also involves planned Langston Boulevard. As you know, planned Langston Boulevard has, well, it encompasses the entire corridor from Roslyn to East Falls Church. Early in the process, the county determined not to include the area plans for Cherrydale and East Falls Church due to lack of resources. The idea was that those would then be done as a subsequent follow-up once planned Langston Boulevard, for the other three areas would be, would be completed. I want to be careful and be sure that we are not going to be creating something within Cherrydale or East Falls Church that would preclude our ability to look, relook and update those two area plans. That all along there has been, we've been told that there would be a follow-up update of those two area plans, those two neighborhoods seem to be amenable to that, and I want to be, you know, I would favor 10A because that would mean any potentially EHO properties within those area plans would be left alone so we could do a more comprehensive replan or update of those planned areas.
So if I may just clarify something about the intentions for the Cherrydale and East Falls Church area plans. When we were scoping the planned Langston Boulevard process, the decision was made to exclude the Cherrydale Revitalization District and East Falls Church because those areas already had plans in place to, to realize a community vision for those areas. The decision at that time was to, once, once there was a network plan from a transportation perspective for planned Langston Boulevard, to determine if changes would need to be made as a follow-on effort to the Cherrydale plan. I don't think that there was, there was an intention at the outset to come back to East Falls Church, East Falls Church, that plan being fairly recently adopted. There has not been an indication in the Planning Division work plan that we would come back to Cherrydale and East Falls Church. I understand we are hearing from stakeholders now that there's interest in relooking at those areas, and that's something that we can certainly consider. So I just wanted to clarify staff's understanding of, you know, what has been signaled about Cherrydale and East Falls Church over the past 10 years or so. With regard, though, to option 10A and excluding EHO development in planning districts, I think the short answer is that doing so would not prevent the opportunity to come back and look at any of these areas. There would, there would certainly be an opportunity through a future planning process in either of those areas to consider what the appropriate vision is, and as I'm indicating for planned Langston Boulevard, determine what properties need to be dedicated or targeted for plan goals, and which properties would be appropriate for EHO development.
I just want to follow up. The concern I would have is not that we couldn't replan it later on, is that before that replanning takes place, sort of, there could be facts on the ground created, that if EHOs were allowed within those planning areas, that someone would then build a, let's say, a duplex, for example. That presumably would be there for at least 30 years. So that, in that sense, even though we may theoretically replan it, that fact is there and isn't going to change. Whereas if we hold off on that, when the replanning comes, it could give the opportunity for more, more than just a duplex, even more than just a six, a six-plex. And it would happen sooner rather than later, even if it takes a couple of cycles before it makes the work plan. So, you know, that's why I would prefer 10A. Thank you.
Commissioner Steinberger. No? Forgot?
I'm trying to decide if my question's still necessary.
Your mic.
Oh. I was trying to decide if my question was still necessary. I guess just kind of, for my own clarification in terms of the timing of how these decisions would be made, in these areas, you know, Langston Boulevard, Cherrydale, East Falls Church, so areas that have a plan in place already, none of the, it is possible down the line that certain, that parts of those planned areas could become eligible for EHO development, but that would not be determined until a later point in time when a comprehensive evaluation of each of those planned areas was conducted?
Okay, so there's.
Am I oversimplifying?
So I can clarify. So in East Falls Church, there's three properties that are, have R zoning. And I don't think that we would want to relook at East Falls Church simply because of those R-zone properties, we would be looking at East Falls Church for other reasons. So just to set East Falls Church aside for a moment, in Cherrydale, there are some properties within the Revitalization District that are adjacent to areas where the planned vision has not yet been realized. And as Commissioner Lintelme just indicated, if we were to allow EHO development on those properties, there is a concern then that those areas would be less susceptible, or there would be less opportunity to realize the planned vision because they would have already sought reinvestment and realized reinvestment through EHO development. There are some properties in Cherrydale, however, R-zone properties, that are adjacent to areas where the planned vision has already been realized. So there has been mixed-use development that's, that has happened per the planned vision on the corridor. In those areas, it, it may be appropriate to adjust the boundaries of the Revitalization District, to remove them, so that they could then take advantage of EHO development. It's a limited number of properties, and we could look at that as a near-term effort to remove those properties, separate from reexamining the entire vision for Cherrydale, because it is, it's kind of like a scalpel-type change that we could make to exclude those properties where it's clear the vision has already been realized, and there's, there's no reason to continue to include those R-zone properties in the Revitalization District. So that was a long answer, but I hope that clarifies.
No.
How we could, how we could treat Cherrydale.
That is helpful, and there's not, in my mind, a right or wrong answer to this. Is there a timeframe by which such a scalpel-like approach to Cherrydale could take place? Or just you guys are really busy and it's on the list?
It is something that we could likely address through planned Langston Boulevard, but it's something that we would want to explore and make sure that we're doing the appropriate stakeholder engagement to make that happen.
Okay, so there's the.
And that, that is something.
Approach to how that could be addressed, it is a nearer term, something that could happen, and it would not require relooking at all of the Cherrydale plan.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schroll, and then Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Brown, picking up on your response to Commissioner Steinberger, my understanding about the Cherrydale plan is that there are, the way the boundaries were drawn, there are several properties for which they are kind of partially, you know, those, those properties are partially inside the boundary and partially outside, that the boundary was not drawn very artfully in some instances. I'm wondering if, as you look at that boundary with that scalpel, you would be able to kind of address that issue as well.
Yes, that would be part of the scope of that, to draw the boundary along property lines.
Just to clarify, we would be drawing the boundary along property lines for those properties that we would recommend to exclude. There might be some properties that we just don't even look at because the plan goals haven't been realized, and we would want to kind of save a study of those areas for when we replan Cherrydale in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson. I think I might be a little confused now because in looking at the staff report, I thought this scalpel work would be done kind of on a case-by-case basis. Just looking at it, it says you could, boundary adjustments could remove sites that are unlikely candidates for redevelopment via a site plan or a form-based code use permit process, thus making these sites eligible for development. So that would be like an individual homeowner wants to redevelop their site, and then they would have to go through this process, or you're talking about like you all would proactively reach out and put together a site plan or form-based code use permit process?
I think what that language is referring to is that those properties today have the ability to seek a rezoning and a site plan, and so changing the boundary would take that ability away, but then would make them eligible for EHO, which for, for many of these properties probably would be the most likely course of redevelopment.
Okay, and so then, a follow-up question would just be, you know, I was learning today about, you know, fees permitting costs. I'm not sure how much a site plan or a form-based code use permit process would cost an individual, but is, you know, depending on how expensive that is, is there a way to waive the fees for those people just because others are just able to develop by rights? So for somebody in this district, I wouldn't want to penalize them for, and make them pay to have to do this extra step if we don't think that it's going to, you know, prevent a plan from taking place anyway.
And I think just, just to clarify that, the, the vision for these areas is not for individual R-zone properties to redevelop at a higher density, it's for assemblage of land to happen. So it wouldn't be individual, the examples that we've seen in Cherrydale where this has already occurred, has been an affordable housing developer who has assembled parcels to build along Langston Boulevard, and that included some R-zoned parcels that were part of a site plan and a rezoning.
Thank you. Okay, so staff recommendation is 10A. Are there any motions to amend the staff recommendation? Commissioner Hughes.
I don't have a motion this evening, and, but I do want to, just for the record, state that staff's support for the carve-out application of the particularly infringing, I'll call it, R lots on the Cherrydale plan coming forward concurrently with Langston Boulevard is comforting to this commissioner, given that Mr. Fusorelli sits behind them and was listening to the whole thing and chose not to interject himself. That being said, this is, it's interesting here, and just for my colleagues, this is the Chinese grocery store, or the Chinese takeout in Boston that's now a nail spa, this is the plumbing store next to the Presbyterian Church on the Columbia Pike Slaughter. So this is the carvage assemblages that don't occur because of other people's individual choices. So I would generally prefer 10B not be the method because I am aware of many of the opportunities on the Pike that staff's aware of in the neighborhood's form-based codes where an R lot is necessary for the assemblage of the vision to be achieved. I still haven't found the three lots in East Falls Church, but I believe you that they exist. But the ones on Cherrydale, I do think, don't meet the vision, and I would hate to see the highest order of development for any site in Arlington to be exclusively a single-family with ADU. So a duplex or a quad block would be better, so I just wanted to make that known. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. So let's go to a vote then on staff recommendation, 10A.
Well, that would be, if it's.
Oh, actually, never mind, yeah. No, 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 we had agreed, in speaking with many commissioners today, that there should actually be a vote on this recommendation.
Okay.
On each recommendation, on each staff's recommendations for the record to the County Board. So let's go, let's go down the list now. This is on staff's recommendation, 10A. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lintelme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye. 10A carries 10 to 0. Second issue, maximum gross floor area, this is option 11. 11, maximum gross floor area. The staff is proposing a hybrid model, which is set forth in its table. Is there any discussion, a hybrid model between 11A and 11B? So are there any points of discussion, anybody want to raise any questions? Commissioner Lintelme.
Yeah, on this, I frankly have no preference between the two of them. How would we vote when we're sort of, would leave it up to the board to decide rather than, than us making a recommendation? We may have that come up in other, in others.
That's just how it's going to be. If we end up going 5-5, or we vote, you know, if there's no recommendation, there's just no recommendation.
Okay, because I don't want to abstain, even though I don't have a preference between the two.
On 5A and 5B, the recommendation, a hybrid option.
I'm talking about 11A and 11B.
I'm sorry, excuse me, 11A and 11B, it's a hybrid option. So we're going with the staff's recommendation, well, we're moving the staff's recommendation. So do you agree with the table, right, the hybrid option?
Right.
That staff has presented?
Okay.
And if, if not, if there's an amendment, you know, a motion to amend it, that's fine too, but right now I'm just asking if there's any clarifying questions on that.
Thank you.
Hybrid option that the staff is proposing. Any questions on it? Commissioner Weir.
Could you explain the 200-square-foot delta between duplexes and semi-detached? Is that the stairwells, the fact that a semi-detached has two stairwells, or something else, or yes, or in-between?
I think it's, it's really the, you know, we have, we have two options that were advertised, 11A and 11B, and 11B was developed as sort of a, not from the Planning Commission, but staff's sort of interpretation of the ZOCO discussions and how they were going. And so staff is recommending just a hybrid of those two, which, the, the way that that works out, there's an extra 200 feet for, for semi-detached, there would be more stairwells, you know, within a semi-detached, but it was more that those two options were developed separately through the ZOCO process, and when it came time to make a recommendation, we thought it, it made sense to, to come up with a hybrid approach.
Okay, thank you. And recalling some of the discussions, I think, with Commissioner Sarley and others, I'm starting to remember some of that, too. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's go to a vote. Commissioner Bagley.
This is to endorse the hybrid option?
Correct.
Which is the staff recommendation?
Correct.
Aye.
And just for clarification for everybody, we will always start with the staff recommendation, and then if there's an amendment to it, we will hear from our colleagues.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Not to be the greatest stickler here of Robert's rules, but if we are going to have additional motions here on each of these individually, somebody should be moving them.
Yes. Each one.
Each one. So if your intention is to endorse this hybrid option, somebody from the DICE should be moving that.
As an amendment?
Yes. I don't think necessarily we need to do that, because I think Commissioner Weir already moved it in this instance.
That's right.
And it is somewhat duplicative, but if, you know, if it gives folks comfort that they're kind of doubly endorsing some of these, or we have a greater chance to discuss them before we vote on it, I guess I can understand it, but I don't think it's necessarily required here.
Yeah, I hear you. I know that some colleagues had expressed an interest of having a vote on each particular matter.
Madam Chair, can I take a stab at this?
Where do you think?
Well, you may have a motion. But my, so my understanding just is that you're effectively, as Commissioner Schroll said, there is a motion that's seconded on the floor to endorse. I think you're sort of taking a straw poll to just reaffirm, right, is that--
Well, I'm not taking a straw poll, I'm actually--
You want a motion on the--
The motion's already out there, so we're just taking a vote on this particular item.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, may I suggest then that before you call the roll, that even if a motion is not, an alternate motion placed on the table, that those who don't support the main motion have an opportunity to be called to say why they vote no, because that's--
On an individual piece, if it's related to that piece?
That's generally the point.
Sure. Okay, let's try this again. Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Nay.
Aye.
Weir? Peterson? Sarley?
Pregnant pause. Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Nay.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel? Aye. So the ayes, the motion carries 8 to 0.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, 8 to 2. And then there's a motion for reconsideration.
That's exactly right. So I'm going to move for reconsideration.
Okay.
It's a scary motion. I promise my colleagues that it only sounds scary. I move for reconsideration. Does the reconsideration motion, is it just to reopen discussion, or is it the actual substitute motion as well? It's the, I'm going to move for reconsideration to endorse option 11B.
Okay. So, solely?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well then--
If there's a second.
Right. So is there a second to the motion to endorse solely option 11B? Commissioner Peterson is the second. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Weir?
I'm mindful that my colleagues might not be interested in taking us up on this, but I'm also mindful that among the overwhelming majority of the public speakers that we had, nearly all of them who spoke to individual items recommended specifically option 11B, and so I would like us to take the moment to consider whether or not that's what we want to recommend.
Okay. And Commissioner Peterson? Yeah, I just wanted to add that 11B is less restrictive, allows for larger-size units, which I think gives us the greater chance that we're going to get family-sized units, which I am very much interested in. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Garen?
I was moved by Commissioner Sarley's notes in his sort of pre-report to us that noted that if we have smaller units, they're likely to be more affordable.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to endorse only option 11B?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Go ahead. Commissioner Schroll?
Yeah, so I'm fine with the motion for 11B. I think my question is more procedural in that we just adopted the hybrid option.
I voted--
And so, I mean, you voted for it.
Specifically to be able to make this motion.
But I don't know if what you're doing is exactly correct, Commissioner Weir.
The, Commissioner Schroll, the chair had started to call the roll, and so I decided at that point that the easiest way to actually try to get the substance on the floor was to let the vote proceed and then do this.
My understanding of motions to reconsider is that they're for things where you get additional information and then want to essentially vote them down. So I think you would have to vote down or amend that motion and then proceed with this motion on B separately.
Okay. So what I think Commissioner Schroll was saying, that we would have to reconsider, you're asking for a vote to reconsider so we can reopen the matter to have-- That's fine. Okay. So right now, let's just be clear on what we're doing, because Commissioner Weir has now told us what it is that he'd like to have done, which is to have an option to only endorse option 11B. Okay? So right now, all we're doing is moving on Commissioner Weir's motion to reconsider our prior vote, to allow him to make his next motion. Okay? So, Commissioner Bagley, on the motion to reconsider.
Aye, I think.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Okay. Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Nay.
Nay. Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel?
Uh-oh.
It would be only option 8.
Aye. All right. So the motion is defeated, the vote is 5 to 5. All right. So now, our original motion, which was the staff recommendation.
I move to readopt the staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Weir's motion is to readopt the staff's recommendation. So let's go through the roll again. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Madam Chair, was there a second for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Peterson, are you the second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson's the second. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Nay.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel?
Uh-oh.
It would be only option 8.
Aye. All right. So the motion is defeated, the vote is 5 to 5. All right. So now, our original motion, which was the staff recommendation.
I move to readopt the staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Weir's motion is to readopt the staff's recommendation. So let's go through the roll again. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Nay.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Nay.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel?
Uh-oh.
It would be only option 8.
All right. So the motion is defeated, the vote is 5 to 5. All right. So now, our original motion, which was the staff recommendation.
I move to readopt the staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Weir's motion is to readopt the staff's recommendation. So let's go through the roll again. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Madam Chair, was there a second for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Peterson, are you the second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson's the second. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Nay.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Nay.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel? Aye. The motion carries 8 to 2. Do we have all that?
It's like a time warp.
Do we have all that?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Thank you.
No. I have a question. Maybe Matt has it, but I thought it was, the vote before that was 6-4. I think you said 5-5.
You voted aye.
Yeah, I voted--
You voted to make it 5-5.
Yeah, I voted to make it 5-5.
Madam Chair, I have 5-5 recorded.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson.
Y'all need to get it together. I'm serious.
Come on, Ms. Johnson.
Get it together, y'all.
Okay. All right. So we are on minimum parking requirements. This is option 5 for everybody following along at home. Minimum parking requirements. Option 5. So option 5, staff's recommendation, is options A and E. Are there any questions or comments on option 5? Commissioner Weir?
I am going to offer a motion counter to the--
This is for questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Steinberger?
Parking studies. How long are we looking at for something like that? What? I lost that question. What was the answer? 45 days, sorry. I do not recall I asked that question. Never mind. Great, thanks, guys. I'm going to be nicer to Commissioner Weir now.
Any questions or comments?
I do not remember.
Commissioner Sarley, you have no questions?
So I did the problem that I did my homework early, and so I got like a defunct version of all of the information. So I'm just looking for the new report on the parking. I think I just found it. Is there any adjustments that happened since the previous report? If you may help me cheat. Sorry.
Is the question, were there any changes between the RTA and what's in the staff department? The only difference is that now there's a staff recommendation, but the text hasn't changed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Weir, you have an amending motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the planning commission recommend option 5A substituting a transit proximate requirement of 0.25 spaces per unit and a provision for parking reduction of no less than 0.25 spaces per unit based on on-street parking surveys.
Second? I thought it was C. So Commissioner Weir has moved to amend option 5A. And it's seconded by Commissioner Peterson. Any discussion?
It's my understa-- I'm doing this in lieu of 5C. I had intended initially to move an amended 5C. The reason that I'm doing 5A, and I just want to state this for the benefit of staff as it goes in recording the commission's recommendation, for RTA compliance purposes, I don't know whether it's better to recommend an amended 5A that goes down to 0.25 from 5, or an amended 5C that goes up from 0 to 0.25. The point is, I think 0.25 is the number that I want the commission to consider, and it would only be A or C. I'm open to a separate consideration of option 5E, given, you know, that, but I wanted to do one thing at a time. Madam Chair?
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
I will be voting against this, only because I'm going to be making a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Transportation Commission, which is for 5C and 5E.
Any thoughts? Commissioner Garen?
Commissioner Lynn Tellme, would you remind us what those are? And then I wanted to say, I wanted to weigh in on that. Yeah.
Yeah, 5E is the add-on. It was one that I think Commissioner Steinberger, or Commissioner Peterson, had originally proposed at the RTA stage to limit the curb cut. There'd be no curb, curb cut can't be, would be the same as the number of spaces that are allowed inside. So if you had only one space, off-street space, you could not then get a curb cut, because a curb cut's the equivalent of one space. It privatizes a public space. So that's 5E, and it's an add-on to any of the other options. 5C is, as Commissioner Weir mentioned, that's the transit, which you could go down, actually down to 0, rather than, you know, he's proposing 1/4 space. This gives the option of actually going to 0.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Madam Chair. Question for staff, if I might, on Commissioner Weir's motion. Wondering if you could weigh in on the kind of RTA question that Commissioner Weir raised about whether this approach was better than, you know, facilitating the amendment through 5C.
I think if I could just get clarification on Commissioner Weir's motion, it would, it's basically, it's 5A, but for the transit proximate sites, how that's defined in 5A, rather than 0.5 spaces per unit, the requirement would be a minimum of 0.25 spaces per unit. Is that correct?
It's 5A substituting the 0.5 requirement for a 0.25 requirement. So that's the parking reduction study and transit proximity.
I think doing it for the study might be out of scope, because for both--
I'm not looking at the, in the interest of trying to be on the same page, Mr. Ladd, I'm not. What I'm looking at right now is Attachment 6, which basically parrot, which, you know, this isn't the text of the proposal, right? But the text in Attachment 6 presents 5A and 5C as basically parallel, but for 0.5 as opposed to 0.
Right. But for the, so the parking reduction is under 5A and 5C, the parking reduction is the same. And it's for the areas that are not transit proximate that have a requirement of a minimum of 1 space per unit. With the parking study, if that's satisfactory, it could be reduced to 0.5. So I think reducing that further for the parking study to 0.25 would be out of scope.
Okay. So I'm persuaded, so I'm going to--
You can only do this one.
Right. So I'm going to seek unanimous consent to withdraw the motion so that I can either fix it, or so that another motion can be made.
Okay, no objections. So the motion is withdrawn. Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Yeah, I then move that the planning commission adopt the recommendation of the adopt the recommendation of the Transportation Commission to recommend options 5C and 5E.
Second.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Lantome, seconded by Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Hughes would like to speak to it.
So I suggest for my fellow colleagues that we begin this motion with Commissioner Lantome's main motion, because it's the furthest to the least amount of parking possible on the site, and then move our way up to possibly Commissioner Weir's motion, and then to, if necessary, to staff recommendation or any further amendments that are necessary. That was kind of the goal in the withdrawal, so that we could begin at the least amount of parking on the site, and then move our way up to what is the number the commission believes is the most appropriate.
Okay. So what is on the table right now is 5C and 5E in lieu of the staff's recommendation of 5A and 5E. Make sense, everybody? All right, let's go to the vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Nay.
Commissioner Garen.
Aye.
Commissioner Seimer.
Nay.
Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Nay.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantome.
Aye.
Hughes.
Aye.
Schroll.
Aye.
Patel.
Nay.
All right, so that motion carries 6 to 4. Any other motions? No motions? Okay, great, let's move on. Well, you want... You have something?
Question. Is there any... We're only going to be recommending one out of any of the options. We can recommend multiple. Oh, great. I would like to move the staff recommendation for 5A. Is there a second?
Ma'am? Is there a second on Commissioner Steinberger's motion for option 5A? Is it you, Commissioner Bagley?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Bagley seconds it. Commissioner Bagley, yea or nay?
Madam Chair.
Do you want to discuss it?
I think there's benefit to seeing where the commission lies on multiple options that were presented. I understand that a very limited parking recommendation or limited minimum parking recommendation has passed. I think it might be beneficial for the county board as they review the record to understand where the feelings of the commission are on some of the other parking options that are out there. And I personally felt that the staff recommendation, which, and I apologize if this requires me to amend my motion, but it would be the staff recommendation, which is both 5A and 5C. Sorry, no, 5A and 5E. I would... That's what I'm moving or want to move. Do I need to do a unanimous consent on that? For it to be the full staff recommendation?
Yeah, because it's been seconded. She only wanted 5A. You've only moved...
No, I wanted it to be the staff recommendation. I just shorthanded that when I'm speaking to 5A, but it was the full staff recommendation, which is 5A and 5E.
Okay.
Is what I intended. Are you still okay seconding that?
She wants 5A and 5E.
Okay.
So wait, so she's seeking unanimous consent to amend her motion to include 5E. Is there any objection? No. And let's be clear, as a commission, we are permitted to relax Robert's rules. And I see some heads nodding with me, and we are going to have to move forward that way, given tonight's discussion. Commissioner Schroll.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question for Commissioner Steinberger. Are you moving just 5E?
No, 5A and 5E.
No, I'm moving the staff recommendation, which... And by unanimous consent, what I now mean from that is both 5A and 5E. So it's both, a full staff recommendation, 5A, 5E. I just got unanimous consent for that.
Right. Okay, so I appreciate that. I don't think this is something that makes sense in lieu of us just adopting 5C. I can understand the 5E being moved, but at some level, 5A and 5C conflict with each other, and therefore, our recommendation would be conflictual as well on that matter.
I tried to address this in my comments, in which I said, I think there's benefit to the county board seeing where the commission's stance is on the staff recommendation as well. And I don't... I'm not persuaded by your argument.
I think we just provided that feedback. I think we've provided the feedback that we didn't agree with the county manager's recommendation for 5A. We just passed 5C. I can understand an argument for passing 5E, which is a different matter altogether. But I'll be opposing your motion for that.
It's fine, I got that sense.
All right, listen, we're going to vote on this. This is a motion to adopt the county manager's recommendation of 5A and 5E. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Garen.
Nay.
Steinberger.
Aye.
Weir.
Nay.
Peterson.
Nay.
Sarley.
Nay.
Lantome.
Nay.
Hughes.
Nay.
Schroll.
Aye.
Patel's going to abstain. All right, listen, the motion fails, 7 to 2. All right, we're going to move on. Yes, so Commissioner Peterson.
Well, so to Commissioner Hughes's point earlier, if we want to explain why we voted a particular way. I actually was pretty supportive of 5C with 5E, but had just wanted to increase the parking ratio slightly to .25. So I had thought that was going to be proposed next and would have supported that, and then I can't go back and change my vote. So that's all. It was the order of the voting.
Commissioner Peterson's point is well made through Commissioner Steinberger's motion by the fact of how she voted. It shows that there's a stronger support for a number just slightly lower than staff in between the two.
All right, let's move on, okay? We're going to go to tree requirements. There's one option here, 6A. Commissioner Garen. Well, Commissioner Garen.
No, I just had a question, and it was the issue that was raised in the Forestry and Natural Resources letter, that there's a discrepancy between the narrative and the proposed language. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, there's... We received a...
Yes, on page 27, it talks about...
Right.
Yeah, minimum of eight shade trees, and then the language, and those are the lines 255.
Right, so the line on line 255 is incorrect, and that will be updated for the county board.
But we don't need to make a motion for that, do we?
No. We will... We'll just update that. Our staff recommendation is eight trees for five and six units.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd.
Okay, thank you. Are there any am... Commissioner Weir.
Question.
Yes.
Tonight, we heard a proposal from Arlington Tree Action Group about tying the number of trees specifically to the R District. Does that proposal square with the RTA?
That proposal would be out of scope for what was advertised.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seimer.
Could that be the subject of further analysis and study that the staff would consider as some of the analysis we're looking at as EHO goes forward? If EHO goes forward.
I mean, we've committed that we would monitor and evaluate and report back on what's happening. And part of the reason that you're evaluating what's happening is to see what's working and what maybe isn't working. And so if this is ever opened up again, that, you know, it could be something that we consider. And we would have the data of what is actually being provided in terms of trees and tree canopy.
Commissioner Garen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ladd. I think that's a really important issue that I want to make sure is captured in our report. A lot of the comments that we've heard over the last couple of years look at the proposed butting of heads between our tree canopy policy and this very worthy policy as well. So I'd like to suggest that that be specifically underscored as something that we do want to keep an eye on going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur with that.
Of course. Commissioner Lantome concurs. Listen, unanimous... Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
So I just want to make sure I understand from staff correctly that the language on 254 should read "up to 4", and then for 255 should read "up to 8".
The language should read "4" and "8", no "up to". It would be a minimum requirement of four trees for two to four units and a minimum requirement of eight trees for five or six units.
Commissioner Hughes, the concern I had noted was the narrative said six trees, not eight. So it was just like...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. And thank you, Commissioner Schroll, for also clarifying that, because he had sent a note to me, and I was actually remiss in bringing that up this time. Are there any more questions on this option? All right, I'm going to seek unanimous consent to adopt the staff's recommendation for 6A. Any objection? Fantastic. Now we're on to accessory dwellings. That is option 12. Option 12, the staff recommends 12B. 12B. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, fantastic. I'm going to seek unanimous consent to adopt the staff's recommendation of 12B. Any objection? Fantastic. All right, look at us.
Robert's rules, you damn.
All right, conversion of non-conforming dwellings to condominiums and cooperatives. This is option 8. Option 8, staff's recommendation is option 8A by right. Any questions or comments on option 8 and staff's recommendation of 8A? Okay, I'm going to seek unanimous consent for adoption of 8A. Any objection? Fantastic, 8A. Duplex definition, that is option 9. Staff's recommendation is 9B. 9B, it's the front door issue. Any questions or comments on this? All right, unanimous consent to adopt staff's recommendation of 9B. Seeing no objection, that 9B is adopted. Finally, we have our catch-all, all other elements of the zoning amendments to Attachment 4. Are there any other areas that we need to consider? Okay, seeing none, we're going to now move on to B. First issue, allowed uses, including maximum number of units within multifamily buildings. This is option 1. Option 1. Any questions or comments? The staff's recommendation is...
There is none.
There's none? Yes. All right. We're going to... I'm going to seek unanimous consent to move forward with the staff's recommendation. Any objection?
There is none. There is no staff recommendation with respect to 1.
Well, this is the issue of whether we are going to six units.
Staff hasn't made a...
Oh, staff hasn't... I'm sorry, excuse me. There's... Now I got it, boy. What time is it? 10 o'clock? All right. Listen, is there a motion on this?
Madam Chair, I would move to endorse that the planning commission recommend option 1A, two-family dwellings, townhouses of three units, and multiplexes of up to six units.
Second.
Was that Hughes? Okay, Weir, seconded by Hughes. Any comments, questions that need to be addressed? Fantastic. Bagley.
Aye.
Garen.
Aye.
Steinberger.
Aye.
Weir.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sarley.
Aye.
Lantome.
Aye.
Hughes.
Aye.
Schroll.
Aye.
Patel, aye. Motion carries 10 to 0. Next item, minimum site area requirements. This is option 2. Option 2, no county manager recommendation here. So we've got 2A, B, C, D, and E.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Weir.
I move that the planning commission recommend option 2A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that? Commissioner Hughes, thank you. Weir and Hughes on option 2A. Any discussion? Okay, can we move... Oh, Commissioner Sarley.
I will be voting against option 2A, and my thinking and my understanding of the process is that by having restraint on some of these options, right, it allows the county to negotiate incentives. And fundamentally, any reservations that I have about this entire process is because I find, I believe, that it needs to be completely driven by incentives. And every time we give away the farm, we are left with nothing to incentivize or bring developers to the table. So that's why I'll be voting against... And that's sort of a standing statement for tonight. Anytime I vote against anything, it's because I believe incentives are the fundamental ingredient.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schroll.
Yes, just quickly, I'll be supporting the motion. As we heard from many of our speakers over the course of Monday's hearing and tonight, you know, adopting 2A will allow this to be the most flexible, the most permissive across the county, which is something that I certainly support. So I'll be supporting Commissioner Weir's motion.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bagley.
Nay.
Commissioner Garen.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Weir.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sarley.
Nay.
Lantome.
Aye.
Hughes.
Aye.
Schroll.
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 8 to 2. Lot coverage, this is option 4, folks. Option 4. Option 4B reallocates 5% to the additional coverage for the rear garage. Any motions on this? Commissioner Weir, do you have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is it my understanding correct? 4 is one where... Am I correct in recalling that we have generally been told that 4B is the more permissive option?
That is what we've generally been told, is that correct?
4B allows for... And Commissioner Sarley knows this very well, for bigger footprints and smaller yards.
Well, that's the motion I am about to make, and I wanted to just make sure that I didn't accidentally make the motion that I didn't intend to make.
Yes.
So thank you for letting me go a little bit out of order. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt option 4B.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Peterson. Any discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Garen.
I will not be supporting this motion. There are a lot of reasons this is timely to move forward on missing middle housing, EHO, but I do believe that it's our responsibility to balance the many competing priorities that are laid in front of us. And I don't think we're necessarily looking for larger footprints and smaller yards.
Thank you. I need... Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, so my understanding is that they would be able to get the extra footprint by putting a garage in the backyard, which then decreases the whole green space of the lot. So I... To me, this seemed like we're getting more green space in the yard by approving 4B. But please correct me if I...
No.
Okay, hold on one second. That is a question of staff.
Yes.
So I think the way... And this is addressed a little bit in the staff report, and this is obviously, it's a complex issue. The difference between 4A and 4B, it's they both have the same maximum. 4A would require you to have the rear detached garage to earn your way to that maximum. 4B would just reallocate the garage allowance to the main building. The way that we looked at this in our staff report is by requiring a rear detached garage, which is required to be eight feet from the building, so it pushes it deeper into the yard where there's more likely to be existing trees, you know, could have a detrimental effect on tree canopy by encouraging the rear garage rather than the main building, which, you know, would allow for a larger building footprint. Again, that would be limited by the main building footprint standard, but to the extent that you haven't reached the maximum main building footprint. It could be a larger building, but that larger building would be, you know, generally closer to the front of the property rather than the rear detached garage, which would be deeper in the property where typically, there's more existing mature trees.
So we're likely to protect more trees with 4B.
I don't know that I would go that far, but that's, you know, that's the staff's thinking about this.
Clarification then. So I've misunderstood this. not for garage?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's a reallocation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Oh, yeah, that's why I would be supporting 4B, because the idea would be, first off, people rather than cars, but also it'd be concentrating the, the structure inside the lot rather than around the, around the outside, where I think it is logical to think that's where the trees tend to be. Unfortunately, too often in Arlington, they scrape the site anyway, which is terribly unfortunate, but that happens by right with single families right now that don't go out to the edge. So this is a larger problem that isn't going to get solved tonight, but I think that compared to what we are having now, to what we're proposing, I think 4B is, is the better answer.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Sarley?
So I have a comment. So I would have preferred to have had the incentive in place for something different than a garage. So then, this is the EHO, it's unlikely to build a garage, so we're embedding the 5% into the base number. I would love to keep that 5% out and, and earn that through some sort of a process, which, like affordability, or the size, or so on and so forth. So that is why I'm voting against 10B.
And going to your initial, or your comment the last time about that your no's would go to incentives?
Incentive, and thank you for the correction, Commissioner Peterson.
Okay, so Commissioner Bagley?
Nay.
Commissioner Garen?
This is for 4...
4B.
Aye, thank you.
Uh huh. Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Nay.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries eight to two. And then the last one under two will be annual limits on permits. This is option seven. Option seven, everyone following along on your bingo cards.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes?
Mr. Ladd or Ms. Brown, kind of wondering if you could explain the process by which the county board would disperse permits or for the 58 permits that are called for in 7C? How would those be allocated? What's the staff's thinking?
So was, as part of the advertisement, the, the county board left it open that, that there could be a method of geographical distribution of whatever number of, of permits are adopted, if, if indeed a cap is adopted. We've been advised by the county attorney that the, the only legally permissible way to do that would be based on the five zoning districts that we have, R5, R6, R8, R10, and R20. And so they could, if the number is 58, they could allocate those 58 permits among those five zoning districts. We know that those zoning districts aren't distributed evenly, and in fact, you know, two-thirds of properties are R6, and the remaining third are the other four. So that, that's an option that's available to them. Something that's suggested in the staff report is that the board could also combine zoning districts, so you don't end up with a situation where you have like, you know, one permit is allocated to R20, because that's such a small proportion of, of the county.
Right. And not only are, do you have fewer parts of the county zoned R20, you also have most of that R20 concentrated in the, in the northern part of the county as well. So that's helpful, Mr. Ladd, appreciate it.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Yeah, I will say that I am not at all happy with the idea of a cap in the first place, so I would be voting against a cap. But if there has to be a cap, I'm strongly against the 7C, simply because I think that would, we would have, it would discourage, it would discourage these type, it would discourage EHOs, yet we would never know that they had been planned in the first place. Because if there's only X number of permits available in, in a year, as somebody building, I'm not sure I want, want to go through the planning to build one and realize I have to wait another year, or however many months, because I missed the queue. We would never know that that project was, wasn't there. What you're doing is you're skewing the information that you'd be getting on missing middle, you know, going forward as to what the actual demand is and how, where they could go. So I would be strongly against 7C. Again, my first choice is, is to have no caps, but if there is going to be a cap, it should be countywide and not geographically distributed.
Okay, so Commissioner Peterson?
Well, yeah, 5, 7C isn't about geographically distributed, it's about having a cap, but it will sunset.
Yeah.
Right, okay, okay, so listen, 7C is about caps, sunset, and then there's the other portion of that, which is the distribution by geographic. There's like an other provision.
Distribution, sorry.
Go ahead.
The distribution part could apply to either 7A or 7C. My question was, do we need to also make a motion on adopting a geographic dispersment as part of this, of our recommendation on this item?
You could. You, you can do that.
Do we need to? Could we choose not?
There's, you don't have, there's nothing on the table right now. You get to do, you get to do whatever, whatever you'd like to move.
Okay, so just to clarify, Commissioner Lynn Tellme, I understand that that geographic dispersment option to be an add-on that would be available to either 7A or 7C, it is not specific to 7C. Are you still...
Thank you for the clarification. I'm against the geographic distribution, I don't care where it is, which option it is. Yeah, so I, I stand corrected, I'm, I apologize for the, the, the error.
Okay, did, Commissioner Weir, you have a motion?
Yes, but if there are any other questions before the motion, I'll, I'll...
Okay, Commissioner Hughes?
So staff's saying now that we can make it by zoning districts, so R5, R6, R10, et cetera, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That does, however, enter Commissioner Lynn Tellme's, because our districts generally confine themselves to different geographic regions based on a density allocation from north to south on the county. R6 and R5 clustered between Langston Boulevard and Columbia Pike Zone, all the way down to a few larger lots in the Pentagon City area, with most R10s and R20s north of Langston Boulevard.
I can share a map if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all know that staff is, seems to be in the report recommending against very much this R district kind of dispersment, because it's going to end up with like really weird numbers. And so maybe it's a non-issue if, that's my only point.
Commissioner Steinberger?
So I have a question on the timeline of, for the permitting process and when units might actually hit the market under the, an EHO plan. So if we, if there is a cap on the number of permits, whatever that number is, that refers, I mean, that refers calendar year, so you would apply for a permit, is that permit only good for a certain period of time by which you would have to have started or completed your project?
I, I think, you know, and we would have to look into whether, you know, once you're granted a permit, it would expire, but I think for the, it, it wouldn't expire within that year period, and then the clock would reset on January 1st of the next year. So if, if someone received a permit and didn't, you know, didn't build the project, I, I don't know, and it's a new zoning permit, so we might have to make a determination as to, you know, whether that's in perpetuity or whether it expires at some point. But if it's approved in 2024, and it's not built in 2025, you would get another 58 permits if that's, if that's the number.
Right, I'm trying to get a, so, and that's what I presumed you would say, there's, so putting a cap of the number of permits per year in no way indicates that you'll get sort of an even distribution of when those units are actually coming online.
Right, that's correct.
So hypothetically, I could, I think it's likely that the first year I would have no units, because people would need time to build them, and then maybe in year four or whatever, I could have 100 or more units, because that's when units actually came online, you know, up to 58, whatever, per year. So the, the cap is a control to a point, but only to a point?
Well, the, the cap would control the flow of permits, and then if they all, you know, if, if you had a year where everyone got permits but no one built anything, and they built it all in the next year, that...
So it's a control, it's a control on the number of permits, but it has essentially almost no effect on the actual number of units hitting the market?
Right, I mean, it wouldn't control the pace that we see change up to, except that it would control like the total amount of supply we're adding, 58 times the number of years where the cap is in place.
So even with a sunset, we, just following my logic here, or try to follow my logic here, maybe it's not that logical, but if we're looking at a sunset of five years and we have no idea when these units could actually hit the market, the sunset is not only arbitrary, but it might not actually give us any useful information.
I, I don't know if I can answer that, but, you know, I mean...
You'll have to.
Think about it in, think about it in terms of, you know, site plan projects that, that you hear and make recommendations on, right? So the county board will approve a certain number of site plan projects in a year. Many, most of them get built within a certain period of time. Obviously, it takes a long time for them to get permitted and constructed, and some of them, you know, they don't get financing, or the market changes or something, and, and they don't get built.
One last question, and then I promise I'm going to get off this point. In terms of, if we don't include a sunset at this period in time through county board action, or if a sunset could be added at some point, or, you know, the cap could be removed through a separate action?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Peterson?
I had questions related to some issues brought up by Commissioner Steinberger during the RTA, which was specifically about like the cap and getting into the queue, and is there any way to give preference to individual homeowners that are doing conversions? I know the Parks and Rec program offers, you know, priority signups for lower-income families or people that qualify for fee reductions, and then residents get, you know, in line next, and then out-of-town people. So is there any way, have you looked into making sure that Arlington's who want to convert their home, which might be better for the affordability of, you know, the EHOs, would, would be able to make sure that they can get stuff done, as there might be working a little bit slower because it's an individual homeowner compared to a builder who's got a whole team and lawyers and people who do this professionally? You know, I just want to make sure that they don't get to the head of the line and take up all the permits, so I want to see if that's been thought through.
Right, and, and that was similar to a motion that the commission made at, at the RTA, and that was ultimately not adopted. It's, we can't give preferential treatment to, you know, certain types of property owners over other types of property owners.
And that's by law?
Yes.
But Parks and Rec can do it.
It's not giving building permits.
Okay, okay. Okay, Commissioner Garen, and then we're going to go to Commissioner Weir for his motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be supporting this motion. I remain concerned...
What's the motion?
I will be supporting Commissioner Weir's proposed motion. But given that we have been zipping through these, I wanted to say why, in case, in case we quickly get out of here tonight. I, I've had some concerns about this going forward. I think, you know, our housing model is vastly outdated, and it's definitely time to do something new, but as a planner and as a member of this particular commission, I think we have a responsibility to consider not only what the impacts of this will be, but how it works with a lot of our other competing policies. And we don't know this yet, so we don't know if this will have the outcomes that we want, and that we'll get a lot of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, or if we'll have the negative impacts, if we'll be displacing potentially low-income minority homeowners in favor of moderate-income renters, and maybe that is an outcome that we're, we'll be comfortable with. But for this reason, I am definitely supporting caps, either that or some sort of pilot study, until we know more than we originally knew, and that we examine these impacts as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Garen. Commissioner Weir with your motion.
Can, can I ask a question?
Okay, Commissioner Sarley.
I just wanted to clarify, I got a little confused by Commissioner Steinberger's logic exercise. So the, the permits have no impact on the number, right? So 53 per year, no matter what, no matter what came to be built. I just want to be clear about that. So January 1st, there's a whole new batch of 53 permits ready to go, no matter how many permits got built last year, right? Yes, that's, if, if there's a cap and then they don't, you know, if the number is 58 and there were only 20... Sorry, did I use the wrong number? It, it doesn't matter. If, if the number is 58 and then there's only 20, January 1st of the next year, there'd be a new batch of, of 58. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to go to Commissioner Weir for his motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the planning commission finds that expanded housing option development meets several goals articulated across the many elements of Arlington County's comprehensive plan, including but not limited to goals involving housing, economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, and neighborhood vibrancy, and myriad kinds of diversity and equity considerations. However, the commission finds no rationale in Arlington County's comprehensive plan or other planning documents upon which to recommend annual limitations to expanded housing option permits.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll for the second. Any, I don't think at this point we need any further discussion, do you? Commissioner Sarley?
So I will be voting against this motion. I think the cap, I personally disagree with it, but I think it does provide a sort of a safety gauge on this experimental and new zoning ordinance that we're bringing to bear, and I think it's just, it allows us the opportunity to slow it down, and I doubt that we will hit 53 on the first year, but I think I will be voting against Commissioner Weir's motion, because I believe cap is, serves a good function.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm sorry, I am not, I am also supporting caps, I think that was clear, but against this motion, thank you.
Yep. I appreciate the sentiment behind Commissioner Weir's motion. I have mixed feelings about the effectiveness of a cap, but I do think that it is an appropriate way to push our way into these expanded housing options and seeing what we, what that, the impact that has on the county. While I don't know if caps are a perfect way to manage it, and I don't think a sunset provision is going to do anything further, I think at this point in time, I'm not prepared to support Commissioner Weir's motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go, Commissioner Bagley, your vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Garen?
Nay.
Steinberger?
Nay.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Nay.
Sarley?
Now I'm confused. I think nay.
I actually am confused as well.
Nay, yes, nay.
Yours is nay, Peterson?
She said nay, move on.
Okay. Sarley?
Nay.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye, meaning no cap, no cap.
Yes, okay. Hughes?
Aye.
Oh. Schroll?
Aye.
Patel is an a as well, so the motion fails five to five. Are there any other motions? Commissioner Steinberger?
I would like to move option 7A.
Okay, is there a second on 7A?
Second.
Sarley is seconding your motion.
I have a question.
Yes?
Okay, remind me with 7A.
7A is a 58 permits per year. No sunset.
With no geographic...
No sunset, nothing.
And, and no sunset.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hughes?
I move to amend Commissioner Steinberger's motion to add the sunset provision of three years into the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's, Hughes' amendment with Garen's second. Is it self-explanatory, or no, you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, as I voted to support the no cap solution as my preferred alternative, I understand the need some people in the community feel for the cap, and having been a commissioner who voted to remove the cap on ADUs myself, I am enlightened by my colleagues who reminded me that it can help the community transition to something that can feel scary. So for me, I can support the cap, but I would like it to be self-deleting, and so I am willing to support it when we have the sunset provision added into it. And I think three years is more than enough time for failure or success to be visioned and seen through the community and staff to come back to change it if necessary to the county board.
Okay, Commissioner Weir?
I'm prepared to support the motion to amend, only because I think that caps are fundamentally a political decision upon which the commission does not have a basis to make a recommendation. So I will be opposing 7A as amended, even though I will be supporting the motion to recommend that a 7A, if adopted, sunset.
Wait, one more time?
Um, it's a...
Sunset, yes, 7A, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Schroll?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm going to be opposing this motion. You know, I, I can understand the, the rationale for, for having it, and as all the reasons that Commissioner Weir just noted. I do just have concerns about how we would actually, you know, implement this. I mean, staff walked through, and Mr. Ladd walked through his, his map of the county, and I don't see a logical way how we're really going to do this in a, in an equitable fashion. And as, as Commissioner Steinberger kind of elucidated through her questioning, caps aren't actually a protection against development in any one year, so I'll be opposing this.
Okay, and I'll just get to speak, actually, finally. I will concur wholeheartedly with Commissioner Schroll's comments, and I want to make sure that it's very clear for the record about Commissioner Schroll's comments, and I think that Commissioner Steinberger did all the work for us, for all the reasons why we shouldn't have caps, and all the reasons why we shouldn't be looking at sunsets as well. So thanks, Commissioner Steinberger, let's go to a vote on this amended motion.
Wait, is it, no, it's not, it's on the amendment to the motion.
Correct.
Amendment to the motion.
Okay.
This is just the amendment to...
Just the amendment, amendment to add the sunset.
So that's just three years.
To add the three years, yes.
The first vote would be the, the three-year amendment, sunsetting provision I added. The second vote would be if it fails on the amended, or if it fails on the original
To add the three years, yes.
The first vote would be the three-year amendment sunsetting provision I added. The second vote would be if it fails on the amended, or if it fails on the original motion, and if it succeeds on an amended motion.
So I think we have turned 7A into 7C, but done a three-year cap instead of a five-year cap?
Yes.
Which I am supportive of.
Sorry, that's what is trying to happen if it passes.
Okay, thank you. It's very messy. We should have just gone with 7C.
Evidently, I didn't know that.
Okay. Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Abstain.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
No.
Patel, aye. So the motion carries eight to one. Yes, now the amended motion.
Now we have to vote on the amended motion?
Correct.
This allows the letter and the county board to know how we all feel separately about a timeline for any cap that they should choose to elect. And then this vote now would be on the actual cap with a sunsetting provision.
Okay, so now Commissioner Bagley. Does that make sense to everybody?
No, please read it again.
So, go ahead, Commissioner Hughes.
The amended motion now would read that a cap would exist at 58 EHO units per year, sunsetting three years from now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Geren? I'm sorry, Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Nay.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Nay.
Hughes?
Nay.
Schroll?
Nay.
Patel, nay. Motion fails five to five. That's...
No recommendation.
Yeah, so are there any issue, any other motions on seven? On annual caps? Okay. Commissioner Peterson, you have a separate motion. Say again? Yes.
Thank you. Well, so first, I wanted to just say to staff, thank you very much for adding into your staff report educational materials for homeowners. Staff will develop educational materials to summarize the changes for the public and determine the best means to share this information with homeowners and civic associations, particularly those located in the county identified in the attached racial and socioeconomic equity analysis. I appreciate you all doing that. I am going to reintroduce the same emotion that I had at the RTA, only because I am hoping for something more than just materials to summarize the changes that have been adopted, because that could just be like a press statement. And I'm hoping for going farther and, you know, like, here's how you would do it, here are the steps, here's an ombudsman that you can reach out to. So I'll be introducing that again. And I also wanted to say thank you for including the plan to meet with a Housing Commission Subcommittee member and broader community outreach to consider community land trusts, which was also a motion that I had proposed during the RTA. So, thank you. So my motion for tonight is the Planning Commission recommends that the county manager direct staff to develop resources to offer support to existing homeowners in redeveloping their own properties and identify neighborhoods with a strong historical association with communities of color, and conduct outreach to identify neighborhoods with the aforementioned resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Geren. Is there any discussion?
I will just also add that I believe Commissioner Sarley will be introducing a motion for a design book that I think could be part of the materials and resources that could be provided to these neighborhoods.
Okay. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Any, Commissioner Sarley, you have another motion?
Yeah, I guess so. I'll make that motion now. Let's see. I move that the Planning Commission recommended the county board direct the county manager to have staff commission a series of possible design solutions in a guidebook format to provide conceptual architectural drawings and designs for new EHO buildings and conversions of existing single-family homes to potential applicants focusing on homeowners who wish to transition their property from single-family homes to EHOs.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Sarley, seconded by Commissioner Peterson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just talk to it a little bit. EHOs are a new type of building, and the guidebook would help domestify what is possible, and illustrate ideas acceptable to the community, sleuth house solutions for hurdles and help homeowners interested in converting their properties to HO, along with developers who are interested but remain risk averse.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Steinberger?
I just wanted to, I will be supporting this motion. And I wanted to say that I think that the idea of having a design guide and offering that support to members of the community is really essential. I think that we've seen through the course of this process over the last several months, some of the signs around the county that have popped up, and some of the misinformation about sort of what would be by right design for some of the EHOs that are possible. And I think that there may have been a strategic effort to choose some of the ugliest possible buildings on some of those images. And I would strongly suggest that that is not the only thing available, and that a design guide, you know, working with our very accomplished county staff, is a way to indicate and to really support that what comes out of this process are buildings that are, add, you know, both housing units and, you know, really can add beauty to the environment of Arlington, and can be something that really fits naturally into the environs. And, you know, whether there's single-family homes around or other multiple-unit dwellings, whatever. But I think it's really important that we offer that support to homeowners, developers, whoever's going to be taking on these EHO projects. So I'm very grateful to Commissioner Sarley for having this motion, and I will support. Thank you.
Commissioner Geren?
Beautifully said, Commissioner Steinberger. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have a question about the motion. And Commissioner Weir is actually the one who probably should be saying this, but my mic is on. It says the Planning Commission recommends that the county board direct the county manager to have staff commission a series of possible design solutions in a guidebook to format to provide conceptual. I actually like this idea, but I don't like this notion that we're now directing them, that they have to issue some kind of NOFA to have a design book developed that theoretically could be done in-house. I don't know if it can be. But I don't know why it is that we're telling them how it is that they're going to go about getting this done.
So, fair point. And I don't really have a particularly strong stance on this. The incentive there is to essentially create, bring fresh blood into the conversation and have consultants that have not been involved with the EHO take a fresh look at this. And also, you know, staff is a little bit overburdened as we just reviewed the work plan on the last LRPC. So it was sort of given out and allow sort of external consultants to join the team.
So I think I might move to amend this to actually... Go ahead, Commissioner Hughes.
Madam Chair, I just would remind that in state code, this commission itself can employ its independent architects if necessary to establish any analysis or planning we need. So I don't think advising the county board that we believe is a fresh set of eyes or any other method of achieving a better vision for a much better presentation of EHO is outside of our bounds.
Go ahead, Commissioner Weir.
I'm, I'm... If we have internal staff capacity, whether it's fresh eyes or not, right? I mean, fresh eyes is a fair point. But if we have internal staff capacity, I just think it would be, I would be fine with... I'm process agnostic, is my concern. I just, I was also curious about whether you had a particular rationale for treating it as a vendor project, as opposed to in-house staff capacity?
I think that's my problem, too. I don't believe that we need to prescribe the process. Like, the recommendation, the beneficial part of this recommendation is the benefit the community gets from it, and that is a design guidebook. And so I would move to amend this motion to remove the directive that they have to commission this guidebook versus determine how best to be able to bring about this guidebook.
Perhaps we can just add "for" commission. Let staff do it.
Well, I think it just needs to be stricken to commission. Because direct the county manager to provide design solutions in a guidebook format to provide conceptual architectural drawings and designs.
I'm just nervous about overburdening staff, but yeah.
But they get to make that decision.
Yeah, I'm fine.
That's not for us to decide. So I'm going to move to amend your motion to provide that the Planning Commission recommends that the county board direct the county manager to have staff prepare, provide possible design solutions in a guidebook format to provide conceptual architectural drawings or designs for new EHO buildings and conversions of existing single-family dwellings for potential applicants focusing on homeowners who wish to transition their property from single-family dwelling to an EHO.
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Lynn Tellme. Sure.
Can staff confirm for me? Didn't something similar to this come up when the county board heard the RTA and they voted it down? Maybe I'm remembering something incorrect.
I don't recall that.
We had some discussions previously about whether we would... I think there was a recommendation that we would seek some form of like regulatory zoning ordinance amendments versus seek, this is, which is more advisory or guidance material. So that would be the difference, because we, Planning Commission has in some way looked at this topic. All right, let's vote on the...
I just want to add for my colleagues, Commissioner Sarley, but my colleagues as well. I think it's perfectly fine if this is outsourced work product, right? I have, and others on this commission have encouraged staff to find ways to outsource work before. I truly am process agnostic. I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Okay. Bagley?
Aye.
Sorry, not to be technical. Don't you need to seek, like, consensus for the amended version?
Yeah, we need to vote on the amendment.
That's what we're doing right now.
Oh, you're, okay. You're going to vote for the amendment, okay?
Thank you.
Can we repeat the language, what the language was for the amendment?
Amendment is the Planning Commission recommends that the county board direct the county manager to have staff prepare possible design solutions in a guidebook format to provide conceptual architectural drawings or designs for new EHO buildings and conversions of existing single-family dwellings for potential applicants focusing on homeowners who wish to transition their property from single-family dwelling to an EHO. So the difference between this amendment and what Commissioner Sarley presented is Commissioner Sarley's motion directs staff to have to outsource it. The amended motion allows them to decide if they need to outsource it or not.
Thank you.
Okay, on the amendment.
Aye.
Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion to amend carries 10 to 0.
That was the amendment. You have to call the amended motion now.
Yeah. So the amended motion carries 10 to 0. Is there any, are there any?
You have to call the amended.
Oh, I thought this was it, because we already did it unanimously.
You made it as amendment versus seeking unanimous consent to change it.
You amended the motion.
So now you have to call the amended motion.
I thought I said we were going to relax things. My goodness. All right, now the amended motion. Amended motion, let's go. Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel? Aye, shockingly, the motion carries 10 to 0. The amended motion carries 10 to 0. Are there any other motions for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two more motions. So my next motion is an FAR-based zoning. So the Planning Commission recommends that the county board direct the county manager to pursue an FAR-based approach to all zoning districts.
Second.
Okay, Sarley and Weir, I think we've discussed this several times in several iterations in several different spaces, most recently at LRPC. I don't know if we necessarily need to have any further discussion on this. Can we go to voting? All right. Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye. Motion carries 10 to 0. Commissioner Sarley?
One more. The Planning Commission recommends that the county board establish an EHO monitoring group with well-defined metrics and staff support. The group should provide a quarterly report detailing developers' interest and proposals at each stage of the process and include community engagements and commission review, planning, housing, transportation, natural resources, parks, and other issues as they emerge, such as infrastructure, social flood control, et cetera.
Okay, is there a second on this?
Second.
Okay, Sarley is seconded by Geren. Is there any need for discussion?
Just to clarify that this is just to keep track of what we're doing, and this committee, for instance, could remove the caps, suggest the board remove the caps earlier than expected, and so on and so forth.
Okay. Weir, do you have a question?
Just that I have reservations about prescribing the manner in which this will be done, given that I see a lot of this already in the staff proposal.
Okay, Hughes, you had your hand up? Lynn Tellme?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Weir. The idea is a great one. I think staff is already committed to doing this. I don't like prescribing how it would be done.
Okay. Commissioner Bagley?
demographics is not listed, and I was wondering about that since equity is one of the big aspects of this project. And I know we can't demand to get that information from people, but it could be like an optional piece of information that somebody could submit when they're applying for a permit. So I'm just wondering why we aren't collecting demographic information.
Demographics of people applying for a permit or demographics of people who are ultimately living in the home?
Both. Just, yeah, making sure that we're achieving the equity goals of this proposal.
I think it's a fair question. I think the, you know, the only way to do it would be to, you know, send a survey to the address, and, you know, certainly we could consider that, but in terms of, you know, normally when we look at demographic trends, we're looking at a census tract level. And changes at a census tract level are going to happen over decades and not quarterly as was recently suggested.
Okay, so I guess I hear what you're saying, but I think it's important that demographics be part of this list only because it has been such an important part of this conversation this entire time. And so knowing that I would like to propose a motion to put that bullet on this list and knowing that it might not be possible to find the data.
I think we agree with it, and I think we can certainly add it to the list as something that we'll look into the best way to do that.
Okay, so should I do a motion to include demographics in this list? Or we, it's fine to just proceed? We need to. Okay, okay. So thank you for your answer.
Let's vote on the main motion now as amended by all of our amendments. Ready? Everybody ready? Here we go. Commissioner Bagley?
Abstain.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Patel, aye, the motion carries 10 to 0. Commissioner Sarley?
One more. The Planning Commission recommends that the county board establish an EHO monitoring group with well-defined metrics and staff support. The group should provide a quarterly report detailing developers' interest and proposals at each stage of the process and include committee engagements and commission review, planning, housing, transportation, natural resources, parks, and other issues as they